Some work they have done this year on a video for personalized learning. The title of the video is Up Close and Personal, and it was submitted to the South Carolina Chapter of National School Public Relations Association and just recently received a reward for excellence for the quality of this video and how it portrays our district and all the great work that's going on in our schools, by our teachers, administrators, and all of instructional staff. McKinsey will receive the award on behalf of the district at a luncheon on May the 13th. So just want to thank you and be proud of the work that you all are doing. Students in Ms. Kaitlyn Jones's class at our high school recently competed in a state house rally for Special Olympics, and they were recognized for the banner that they created in honor of the upcoming Special Olympics. So proud of our students there. We have recently had two students named to 2022 Palmetto Girls State, our delegates, our Cameron Price and Ella Sawyer. Again, we're happy and proud of our students for being recognized, and we want to thank the American Legion Auxiliary Post 61 and Deborah Ward for recognizing our talented students. Now, we're all familiar with the Palmetto Girls State. It has moved over the years, but now it's at Presbyterian College. It'll be held June 12th through the 19th. And again, their focus is on learning more about government, Americanism, citizenship, while they're participating in political activities at the city, county, and state levels of government. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students. I have talked about our archery team on several occasions as our founding program for athletics, and Harley Rogers as senior is the first of our fledgling program to win a scholarship. So Harley during the South Carolina state tournament won a $1,000 scholarship that was awarded from the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources. So we're proud, and again, our new program's already paying off for our students. We go through several audits, financial audits, federal programs audits, and we always go through these audits with flying colors. Recently, we went through a federal funds audit, and this is completed by the South Carolina Department of Education. It's an annual audit, and what they do is a risk assessment. And there are three levels in the risk assessment. The first and the best is low, that's your low risk, medium, and high. And so, we scored not only low risk, but lowest of the low. We scored a 10, which is about as low as you can get. The criteria they look at are the factors in determining how well you're using your federal funds. Are you doing the required reporting? Are you keeping key personnel? Are you in compliance with what's required by the programs? Your physical compliance, your performance? Do you need technical assistance, financial stability, and then just overall quality of the management of the overall program? And so, again, I just want to thank our people that work in our federal programs, our finance department, our principals, all those work together to make sure that we, and our instructional staff, make sure that we use the best and make sure we're rear-prudented with our federal funds. I want to kind of give you just a quick update on construction. Our Cate Center, if you've been by there, and I have some pictures, I'll show you in just a moment, but if you've been by, you'll see that the block work has been completed over spring break. This week, at the end of last week, they started spraying insulation spray foam. If you look, you'll see that it looks kind of a yellowish color, and now you're seeing brick start to appear on the outside of the insulation. If you go by tonight, you'll see a huge crane looming over the top of the crate, the new Cate Center. You may see some steel going up for the rafters or the trusses for the roof. When I was there this morning, I didn't see steel going up yet, but you may go by there this afternoon and see some steel on top of the structure. With the fine arts and administrative addition, they have begun block work there as well. They were supposed to pour the second building pad today, but with four and a half inches of rain, that had to be postponed until the 26th. And I know back in January that I shared some photos with you, and I backed up a little bit. I won't show you, I think right now we've accumulated about 200 photos. I won't show you all of them tonight. Just, I think I'm going to show you about 24. So I want to back up to, you know, before, this is back in August, before construction actually begun, or began, and I want to start in the front. So this is the front of the school, and so again, you've already seen this back several months ago, but I'm more quickly, well, there we go. So, we started with the foundation work not too many weeks ago, and from there, we have progressed to a building pad, and you see some walls starting to appear. This is not cooperating, sorry. We've got such a distance there with the, it's not picking up very well. So if you'll take a look at the front of the building now, you'll see that the walls are quickly going up on the left side. Now, if you take a look on the right side, you see the foundation, that that's ready to be poured, so that's what we're waiting on to pour the second, the second concrete pad for the building. If you look at the existing building, you can see the walkway or the hallway that's the outline that's budding up against the building, you see where the students are going to enter eventually when we get to that point. Ms. Rye, will you advance it for me? It's just not cooperating. And here's another look from the front of the school, and again, you can see a little bit more with the actual magnitude of the walls and things that are going up. All right, so now let's, we'll take a quick look at the Cate Center. Again, this is the, what the finished Cate Center will look like is you're exiting the building from the tennis court side, what students will be seeing every day as they're going to the Cate Center. So back in September, this is what the ground looked like behind, between the existing Cate Center and the building, and so from there, we progressed quickly. Okay. And so you see the foundation work that I showed you back in January, and again, if you take a look, you'll see walls have quickly arisen from the foundation. And again, a few weeks ago, you see the far half is pretty much complete, ready for steel. And then you take a look, you know, again, through spring break, you see walls being completed on the existing school side. Again, they're topping off on that existing school side, and then you can see where it's connecting to the existing building. And this is, was, as of yesterday, you'll see that the block is finished, and you see that yellow is the insulation that sprayed between the block and the brick. And last, you can see the, you know, again, a good view. It's kind of hard to see, but if you look down on the ground, right where the yellow meets the dirt or the foundation, you can see some brickwork starting to appear, and so that first course of brick has been laid there, and so they'll be working on that next. And then finishing up there back at the, what the fine arts and administration building will look like when we complete. Any questions on the construction? Two quick announcements, and then I'll be finished with my report. Just want to remind everyone that the band state championship ceremony where our band students will receive their rings will occur on this coming Monday at 6:00 PM in the media center. And I think you received an email today that we're excited about our production of Frozen Junior from the elementary and middle school, and that will be on Saturday, April the 30th, and the first show's at 11:00, and the second show is at 5:00. So I know that it'll be a wonderful performance, and hope everyone can attend. And that concludes my, oh wait, one last thing. I want to update you on COVID. I can't believe I almost forgot COVID. This is the best news that I have to share with you since, you know, we started battling COVID in our schools, you know, quite some time ago. The last member that we have had in our district to test positive occurred on February the 28th, so we're about six weeks out without a single staff member testing positive. We did have a student test positive a couple of weeks ago, one student tested positive the week of the 21st, but otherwise, we were again, in that six-week stretch, with just one, and again, we've not quarantined a staff member since Valentine's Day, and we have not quarantined a student since February the 28th. Really looking great.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Next on our agenda is our public participation section. This portion of the agenda encourages participation by citizens in our community. Participants may speak for five minutes or less on school or district operations, school programs, or school or district matters of concern. Participants may only address those matters that are directly school or district-related. In this public forum, the board will not hear comments on specific personnel, nor will the board take any action on topics discussed. Open discussion with the board is not permitted in public participation portion of the agenda. To be recognized for public participation, interested persons should complete a request card prior to the meeting, and I think I have four. Do I have any more? No more? Okay. So, in the order that they were handed to me, I'll start at the top. Jennifer Richardson.
I come before you this evening representing many different facets of education. I come as a parent of Lexington III students. I come as a teacher and advocate of Lexington III students. I come to you as your Teacher of the Year at Batesburg-Leeville Primary School, and I come before you as a lifelong lover and supporter of our community and schools in Lexington III, but I also sadly come before you this evening feeling both disappointed and discouraged. I have served at BLPS with a happy and whole heart for nine wonderful school years, and have made some of the most memorable and enduring connections with students, parents, fellow teachers, and administrators. In those, in my time there, I have been both witnessed and faced adversity from many different sides, but I have remained true to my support of our schools and our community. Over the past several weeks, I feel that my commitment, my time, my love, my support have gone unnoticed. My voice has gone unnoticed, and my opinion does not seem to matter. I'm fearful that decisions have been made without hearing both sides of the story. Why is there a group of teachers here tonight who have not been recognized or heard? I understand that people can become unhappy with things, and at times advocacy is an important part of being a parent and community member, but God knows, I'm here to tell you that I will advocate for our students to my dying day. But I also recognize that being an advocate does not allow one to become a bully. It is my belief that an amazing administrator in person has been literally bullied out of a position in which our very own school board firmly believed just a short year ago she was highly qualified to fulfill. I tell you this evening, our former principal is one of the most amazing people I have ever had the blessing to meet. She has been a mentor to me throughout my years teaching at BLPS, and has supported me in my personal and professional growth in ways that are indescribable. She's been nurturing and almost a mothering figure to me in some of the most hardest times of my life. She has held me to the highest level of expectations, which has taught me in turn to hold myself to that same level of expectation. In my years working at BLPS, I've seen our administrator in some of the best and also toughest of situations. I've questioned her countless times on how someone can have such a calmness and peacefulness about them. Some of those involve students, parents, and even teachers, but I've never heard her lose her temper or disembark on her level of leadership. When asked how, her answer is simple. She prays and she trusts in the Lord. I'm reminded of a quote by Robert Frost, "Education is the ability to listen to almost anything without losing your temper or your self-confidence. To be an amazing leader means you must listen to and watch things that go well beyond most persons' ability to sustain control, and yet our leader does it with poise, confidence, and grace." In order to meet the qualifications of an awesome administrator, one must be a life-changer for students across a district, a hand for them to hold, a shoulder for them to cry on, and a voice when they have no other. How is it that we find ourselves this evening in a district that is committed to excellence, losing one of the most valuable assets to students that we here in Lexington III have ever had? Maybe it's because excellence is expected in our teachers. Maybe it's because equity is represented in our school building, or maybe she just simply believes in our school and our students. I find no relief in saying any of these maybes, because they all lead me to the same conclusion. My principal is exactly what BLPS needs most, commitment, conviction, and compassion. I look back over the past few years, and I reminisce on my why. This reminiscing reminded me, when I was employed prior to Lexington III, in attending a Chamber of Commerce meeting, where the Reverend Dr. Charles Jackson of Brooklyn Baptist Church was an honorary speaker, and in his speech, he referenced the meaning of community. Come, unity. Hear that once more, community. One of the most exciting days of my life was being announced Teacher of the Year at BLPS. The pride I felt and the excitement to call my daddy and tell him my good news was unsurpassable. In my interview back in September, Mackenzie Taylor and I talked about my love for this small community, and how it never ceased to amaze me how we come together. She talked about how BNL is almost a time capsule of what's homegrown America looked like in the past. Well, I'm here to tell you this evening that we are indeed in a time capsule, one that has unfortunately catapulted us back 40 years, one in which equality, ethics, and voice go unnoticed, and to say I'm disappointed is an understatement. I'll leave you with this thought, amazing people persevere and continue to advocate for what they believe in regardless of where they may be. It is unfortunate that those people who come to support and love our school and our leadership are left with lost unanswered questions, insecurities, and most of all, a doubt for something that we all believe in with all of our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next caller is Mr. Charles Davenport.
Board members, Mr. Superintendent, as a former board member, vice chairman, and a chairman, I clearly understand what you're supposed to do to educate all the children of this district. As taxpayers, we pay to provide the children of this district. As taxpayers, we provide the resources. The main two duties that board members have and are charged with is number one, establish policy, and number two, hire a superintendent. That superintendent is then the day-to-day face of this district. As a board, you're elected to support the superintendent and let him do his job. Sound like I know what might be going on in Zach's board meeting, don't it? Not really, but I know there are some things a superintendent will not do on his own. When the board gets involved in day-to-day operations, things go astray. We were glad to see a person of color be moved slash promoted to the district office. It is the community's perception that this move, promotion, was inspired by a social media post and about maybe 10 people at that primary school. Now that's a cause for a problem. When a gossiper can tell the community of the school that a personnel change is going to happen before it's announced, that means it came from within this circle. We old folk used to say, you have a leak in your building. We do not need social media, gossip, and drinking groups determining what affects our students the most. We do have and do not have representation of the black community on the staff because of the racism exhibited by some of your actions. Some of the people do not come back because they don't want to work for you when you see these kind of things being done. When our students do not see that we can work, or they can work in this district and be promoted to a position of leadership, they don't want to return and take their talents elsewhere. Batesburg, Leeville, and Saluda are so small a towns. In most cases, we all know each other, and we know who's related to who. To cause a disruption for other employees, not only at Batesburg Primary, but the others who know about what really prompted a move like that is disgraceful. When we start looking at principals, all principals get looked at. When your staff and your community start talking, you'd be surprised what you can find out. It seems like all principals need to be held to the same standards. Right now, it seems that a person who's duly qualified, other words, not unqualified as social media has presented, who sets high expectations, who disciplines and reprimands when needed according to established guidelines, and who is minority does not stand a chance in this district. You had a white principal and gave her three years to try. Name the black female principal. The first one in this district, I commend you for that. And eight months into the first year, you move. Not because she's not doing her job, but because of gossipers, drinkers, social media, and the color of her skin. When the school board begins micromanaging, instead of allowing your superintendent and a professional staff to do their job as dictated by national, state, and district guidelines, it makes us think of calling in assistance from other sources that do not tolerate injustices and unfair treatment of women and minorities for social media foolishness and not facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Next up, Ms. Grayson Livingston.
I just have a couple of concerns. I have sent you already a four-page letter that none of you chose to respond to except for Dr. Atkinson. What you're hearing is sad but true. A lot of us feel the same way. Our leader was taken from us, and change is not easy. It's not easy for a lot of people. Change was needed at the primary school, and thankfully, a lot of the instigators and all of this stuff are going elsewhere. So hopefully, that leaves those of us who genuinely care and are concerned for our kids and our future in Batesburg are left to fill the void and to love on these kids like we're supposed to. We need our leader back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. And last but not least, Ms. Susan Burkett.
Many of the employees at Batesburg-Leeville Primary School are saddened by the school board's decision to promote our principal in the middle of the school year or at all. Because of this decision, our school is losing some very good homegrown teachers who are deciding to leave our school this year because of how you've handled this situation. I've had several young teachers come to me and say, I am very worried about my job because if somebody out there goes and says something negative to me or about me in the community, at the ballfields, at the homeland, or on social media, then what is going to happen to my job? Is it going to be gone too? And that's sad to say for our young teachers that we could have here for a very long time, just as I have been for a very long time. A school is a business, and this year, it was being run as a business. In most businesses, you're expected to be on work on time and to do your job. At the beginning of the year, our school was given clear expectations of what it was expected of us and our jobs, and these expectations were expected to be followed. When they were not followed, you were given feedback on what you needed to do to correct them. Some staff did not feel that they did not have to follow these rules, and no one was to tell them they needed to correct what they were doing wrong. That's been a problem in our school for a long time. I've been here, this is my 34th year, and there are some people who just feel like they should not have to follow rules. Our principal was a very professional person. She treated everyone the same in our school, no matter the race, gender, or what your last name was, or who you were related to. Some staff in our school are very upset about these expectations, but if you were in a typical business, you would have been fired, and I've told many of them that. Instead, they went out in our community at the ballfields and at Homeland and complained. The board listened, but never set foot in our school, never set foot in there to see for yourself what was going on in our school. Y'all are always there, jolly on the spot, when somebody invites you to come and put on a dog and pony show for you, but you don't want to come and just see for yourself when you're hearing all this out in our community. Before you make a huge decision, as you made for our principal, you would think that the board would have come to the school to see for yourself, instead of taking word to those who are complaining at the ballfield and places like Homeland. I do hope that you will reconsider your decision and reinstate our principal where she needs to be for the good of our school, the children, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burkett. That's all the cards that I have. Take us to our next section, Section 4, our information items. First up is our Batesburg-Leeville School Project contract construction.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkinson, one of the things that we wanted to do when we started all of this construction was to look at creating a place for our band to practice. We also wanted to look and give you the most flexibility that we could with the potential of potentially having this field be used for soccer practice, football practice, whatever you want to do with it. And as a result, we And as a result, we started looking for possibilities of where we might place a future practice field. And we've come up with a location, and we've had this engineered. And at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Glenn Dillon with Contract Construction, who's going to give you a little more information on the project.
Good evening. What I've got up there is the actual location of where we're looking at for potential location of this future practice field. As you can see, the shaded part in the bottom right of the screen is actually the end of the existing Cate Building, the loop that goes around, that comes in from the right side and then loops around. So this is actually down the hill where there's two storage sheds right now on the way to the softball and baseball fields. So with that said, and the clicker's not clicking. It's slow, I think. Okay. This is what's there right now, and what the demo we're going to do is we'll get rid of the two sheds, move a fuel tank, demo the asphalt on the right-hand side, remove some of the fence on the track side, and do over some of the storm drainage in making for the new field. And it's not doing. Oh, there it goes. This is the actual location of the new practice field. The new practice field will be sized not only for band practice, but for soccer and for football. It'll be incomplete with new grassing, sod, and irrigation, as well as modified storm drainage to make sure that drains properly. The asphalt will be relocated, shoot, relocated to the right-hand side of where we're doing on the old one in order to make a hill. We're also putting a fence around it to keep people off of it, only when those times allow. Okay. The price of this is $451,336. We're moving about, you said less is more, so I won't tell everything. They were moving 9,000 yards of dirt, as well as all the storm drainage that goes into that, and the sod. The sod is tiff way, is typical sports field. This is our GMP document showing that price.
Happy to answer any questions you might have? Thank you.
Takes us to Section 5, our action items. Second reading approval of our 2022-2023 school calendar. Mackenzie Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow Board of Trustees, members. I hope you had a wonderful Easter weekend. It feels like forever ago, but about a month ago, Ms. Ryan and I presented to you two options for the 2022-2023 school year calendar. One was a modified calendar, and one was what we called a traditional calendar. And given the short timeframe that we are working with, and in an effort to allow more time for planning, you all gave first reading approval to the traditional calendar for the 2022-23 school year during the March Board of Trustees meeting. This calendar was included in your packet again this month, and tonight I bring it forth to you for second reading approval. There were no changes from last month, but if you had any questions that might have popped up in the meantime, I'm happy to answer those.
I do have a question. I was wondering, what are the summer work hours again?
I would have to look, Ms. Francis, and confirm, and maybe Angela can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 7:30 to 4:45, and that's with a 30-minute lunch break. And if you decide to take an hour lunch break, it's 7:30 to 5:15.
And the regular work hours?
Regular work hours are 8:00 to 4:30.
Any more questions? Any motions?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for second reading approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar.
I have a motion by Ms. Derrick. Do we give second reading approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Boulton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, or say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move into executive session for discussion of employment matters.
Have a motion by Ms. Derrick. Do we move into executive session to discuss employment matters? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burgess. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are in executive session.